All right, so it is 7:04 PM. I'm going to call the planning board meeting of March, what do we, the 19th to session. We'll call it Addie Mae Weiss. Aye, Frank Coke.
Aye.
Will Denham.
Aye.
And our six member.
Rob Wolf is just, Rob is just joining.
Okay. Andy Goodall.
I don't see him.
Here.
Oh, here he comes.
Join.
I guess, continue.
Okay, all right, we have, we have a quorum, so we may proceed with our meeting. The first item on the agenda is, I guess, our agenda is pretty light tonight. I believe we are doing minutes, an overview of the advisory select board hearing on this past Saturday, the 16th, and then town planner report and any other messages for information with reports from other boards. And that would be pretty much it. So I expected to go pretty quick, but felt that it was still useful to have this meeting for tonight. So I guess the first item on the agenda would be the minutes. Did anyone have any questions or edits or comments on the minutes? Which they were the March 7th, which ones were they?
Yes, March 5th, I think.
March 5th, yeah, yeah. Motion to approve the minutes of March 5th.
So move.
2024, move the seconded. Rob, or I mean, yeah, Rob or Will second? To approve the minutes of March 5th? Okay, Will second. Okay, all in favor of the minutes for March 5th? Addie Mae Weiss is aye. Rob Wolf?
Aye.
Frank Coke?
Aye.
And Will Denham?
Aye.
Okay, so the minutes have been approved. And then the only other item was we did a, we presented the inclusionary zoning bylaw amendment, which is warrant article 14 to this select board, joint select board advisory hearing on the 16th. And Rob was in attendance and Andy Goodall was also in attendance. And it was nice to have you both there in case something came up. So thank you both for taking the time to be there that day. We weren't posted, so we couldn't speak as a planning board member, but in that situation, any one of you could have spoken as a resident who has some familiarity with the topic. I think it, you know, I guess the, the end of the, of the day, we had Jeff Waldron and Paul Durentis both voting no. Paul because he feels that he wants the inclusionary zoning change to happen a year from now because he thinks it'll, he wants to hold Paul Brothers to building 10 affordable units instead of seven. Jeff Waldron, I'm not 100% sure exactly if he's in the same situation or exactly what his reasoning was. Steven Si and Marion Noitré were 100% supportive. And Eric Johnson recused himself because, partly because of the Coolidge Street developments somewhat being affected by the change in inclusionary zoning. My comment was that inclusionary zoning really doesn't have anything to do with those developments, per se, that we should be fair across the board for all developments. And the primary argument was the financial feasibility and the fact that what we currently have is making it financially too challenging for a developer to utilize what we have. And this advisory unanimously supported. So they will be writing a report in the, in the warrant that goes out to everyone in town that does support this article. Andy or Rob, did you guys have any takeaways from being on the other side of things? Just kind of observing, anything that I know we probably need to, I need to work with you guys to kind of make, to see if I can polish up my presentation on it. But any thoughts that come to mind from having attended?
Um, go ahead, Rob.
Yeah, no, I, I didn't have a lot. I mean, I, I do think, you know, we could probably do a little bit of polishing, but I think it was, um, because it's, that five minutes goes by quick.
Yeah.
You gotta be, you know, you gotta prioritize a little. But I, I don't know, I thought it actually, I thought it was pretty good, but yeah, I'd be glad to sit down with you if you want to practice and we could try some more. But I think that, let me see, there was something that happened there. Let me think about this. I'm trying to remember, somebody, somebody in the meeting seemed to have some kind of misapprehension about what, how this worked, but I can't remember what it is. There was something I noticed that, I don't know, I'll, I'll speak again if it comes back to me. But I just thought somebody seemed a little bit confused about how it worked. Maybe Andy remembers, I don't know.
I, I think there was a little bit of confusion about elderly housing versus affordable housing and how those two intersect or might intersect. Yeah, I, I can't remember specifically. I mean, my, my sense was, my sense was that, that the people on advisory and the people on select board had made up their minds on the topic.
Yeah.
Uh, and, uh, because there was actually rather little discussion, I would say. I think the presentation, I, I agree, I think it's, I think you've got, it was pretty balanced and the content was, was about right. And, and yes, a little, little polish and, and any help we can give on that would, would be good. I, I didn't find it really gave any indication of what a town meeting might really work because as I say, there wasn't really a lot of debate. People, people in the know seem to think it was reasonable unless they've got a particular ax to grind. But I'm just not quite sure how it, how it will go down with, with the average resident.
Right, a fair point, yeah.
So I'm just wondering, hearing what you say, would, would maybe an introduction starting out what inclusionary zoning or include an affordable housing is, um, help? Because we are going to be talking to a more uneducated audience as opposed to an educated one. You know, the advisory knows about it, they've seen this before, same with select board, but maybe, I think Andy's got a good point. Maybe just 30 seconds, if we can fit 30 seconds in on what this bylaw is.
Yeah, that probably makes a lot of sense and it would help kind of launch. I feel like I struggle a little bit with kind of, there's a history. But yeah, having a little preface of what inclusionary zoning is, uh, might help kind of with the, I mean, we did a lot of education in 2020, but, um, you know, we call it inclusionary zoning a lot of times, but of course the bylaw says affordable housing bylaw, so it's, um, we, you know, two different terms and not everyone realizes they're the same thing. Frank, what do you, what were your thoughts?
Well, unfortunately I wasn't able to be there in the afternoon. I was there in the morning, but I apologize about that.
Aye.
We do have, uh, time for a presentation at town meeting and it sounds like it would be a good idea to at least throw some slides up, keep, you know, keep focused and go through some of those things. And maybe even just a, a handout for people when they come in that can give that, that, that history discussion so that, um, you don't have to spend a lot of time on it, but you, you know, you just, you'll hit the points of it and, and move forward with the other, the points that you wanted to make so you can be succinct and, um, you know, get all the, the areas covered. And I'm also happy to help with, um, with creating that. And Marion's coming on, so she might be a good one to add a few thoughts as well. I see Steph Evans and Ray, so I'll be quiet in a minute.
Hey Steph, was, I don't know if you were still there. I know you had had to leave at some point, so.
I did, I ended up staying on until, um, the end of the meeting just because it ended at 3:20 and I was trying to leave at 3, but it was so close and I didn't want to come back later and get those last few minutes. So I completely agree, I think my, the, the presentation, the PowerPoint that you did was, was great for the audience of, of that meeting. But I completely agree with Heidi because you launched right into like inclusionary zoning and, and I think that like for town meeting, it would be very beneficial to define that. Because I, because I was taking minutes, I have a record of what was said right in front of me here. And, um, what I would say is that the only people who spoke were town officials, so to speak. It was just Paul Durentis, um, and Marion and Sean were the only people who spoke on the issue as far as comments goes. I'm wondering, um, if the point of confusion that Andy, no, that Rob brought up was about chapter 3A, um, conflict with, um, with the 15% because that was very confusing even to me, um, who, who I, and I consider myself to be fairly knowledgeable. I think there could be a more clarity on how the general attorney's office weighs in and, um, what they saw as the potential conflict. Because I think that's an argument for the bylaw, right? So, um, if that point can be made a little bit more succinctly, like I think that it would be good to sort of sit down and think through what are the points we're trying to make here? It's, it's consistency, um, which, which goes both to the 3A potential conflict and just general consistency and fairness across the board. And, but yeah, but I, so I wonder, Rob, if that was the issue that you were thinking of?
Yeah, it, it had to do with the 3A.
Yeah.
And there's a bunch of confusing things when you start trying to think about both of those together.
Yep. So, um, separating them a little bit because there is a lot of people who are familiar with 3A since we just had that hearing. And so separate, showing how they're separate, but then how there is potentially a conflict, I think would be a useful, um, thing to articulate.
So Marion, I started by saying I know it needs polishing and I know you had offered to also work with me, so I have a couple of people to help me. But, um, in general, what were any, I know we, we, the main takeaway is that we feel that we need to maybe make sure that the basics are addressed because, um, at the Saturday hearing, they were all people that were fairly well already informed, unlike a town meeting audience.
Marion.
I think you muted, Marion.
I always do that, sorry. Yeah, you know, I, I just jumped in a minute ago, but I think you've probably, uh, heard from others the sort of things that I would say. I, you know, I think that there's no quick way to do this. I mean, in my, in my experience, my, my humble experience is, uh, town meeting is one of the hardest speaking engagements I've ever had. And I've lectured virtually all over the world, but five minutes? Oh my God, it is hard. And basically it has to be no word out of place. You have to know exactly the words that you're going to say, the sentences you're going to use. And the only way to do that is to sit down and just plug through it with somebody, you know, kind of coaching and go back over it and back over it and timing and stuff. And I think there's just no substitute for that, you can't wing it. I mean, at town meeting, I've never been able to wing it, never. Uh, because I know how dangerous that is.
Right, no, true. Frank?
So, you know, we should set up some, maybe some, um, I don't know, when, Addie Mae, I, I feel bad because I know how little time you have and how hard you're working and your kids and all that. And here I am with all the time in the world and running. So it's kind of an uneven playing field, but I'm really happy to set something up.
Yeah, I mean, town meeting is April 24th, right? So I have now, I mean, we kind of went on this, a lot's been going on in the month of March.
Yeah.
So I guess March, since February 7th, so it's been, um, or when it, or February 20th, whatever it was. So it's been a blur, but I think we're finally in a, like, catch my breath with everyone here. So yeah, no, it, it does need polish and especially because it's five minutes and it needs to be accurate and concise and clean. So, um, I'll definitely work on it and I might have each of you separate.
Yeah, sorry, I interrupted. It has to be written out and you're such a good writer. I mean, I think you'll, you'll find that writing it out will give you such confidence, especially if it's, if you've tried it out on all of us. It, you'll have all the confidence in the world and it'll just go much easier.
Yeah.
And then also, there are things you won't have, there are things you won't have time to say and you have to accept that. But, uh, anybody here listening to this is willing to ask the key question at town meeting. You know, it's standard, I want to ask what you want to ask.
Right, and I think that, that's probably some of the most valuable if we, if I, like, even when I was kind of, I did wing it a little bit on Saturday, um, you know, had slides. But, um, you know, I also was kind of rushing through because I do think sometimes the best information comes out from the opportunity to someone asks a question and someone is able to hopefully answer, uh, you know, a question that then gets answered. But yeah, I guess having everyone here to kind of be ready to help with those because if you run out of, you know, it's good to have other voices and not just one.
Yeah, and other people can speak in, um, in support too and bring up other points. But I'll tell you, it has to be scripted. It really has to be scripted.
Well, that's what I was just going to say and I was going to add is just this next point of, uh, taking advantage of those open conversations and having those questions maybe by planning board and/or other individuals, having a written dialogue or written, uh, question that is, that is asked so that you can continue the conversation in that manner. And you certainly have, you know, four or five of us here that, that could be part of that, which will add another two and a half minutes times, you know, five, so that's another 10 minutes or more. And, um, you know, you get a little bit more done that way.
But we do have time now, so.
Yeah, Andy, did you have another thought?
Yeah, I just want to add, you know, so there are these three compartments. There's a handout, there's five minutes presentation and there's Q and A. And we just should think about how we want to use those three elements together. Maybe the handout could be definitions of what these different types of things are. The, the, you know, the speech is the, is, is, is the, is the cell and then there may be some more informational pieces that we can build into some scripted questions. And I think those three different elements give the maximum amount of information coverage in, in the meeting and we, so that's, that's my thought.
I think that the handout could also have the, um, the, all the words on the slide about the timeline so that the timeline slide can just be, you know, more graphical in nature, but all the words would be detailed out on a timeline in a handout because nobody's going to retain that on the slide.
Right, and there'll be a lot of time when they're seeing through the budget section area to read something, so. I think that makes a lot of sense to put something together for people to read, so. All right, well, I think I've got my homework and I know I've got lots of you to help me, so I'll, uh, make a stab at coming up with something for you guys to give your feedback on. I don't think there's, we need to talk anymore about this article and I think otherwise it's the only other agenda item on the table was, um, town planner, unless I'm missing something.
Any other board reports? Anyone have anything that came up of interest?
Yeah, I, I've got something from groundwater protection. So before Dorothea left, she was asking us to put something together for the Celebrate 350. And the current thinking is to try to do something very accessible on groundwater as a shared resource and how your activities and your neighbors' activities and the town's activities can all impact your groundwater. And then to have like, sort of like a two-part where the first part is like very accessible to a layperson or an average Sherburne citizen. And then the second part is when we have some scientists going into, um, some detail on certain contaminants of concern in Sherburne. So whether that be PFAS or manganese or radon, some of the things that just keep coming up to our committee as water quality concerns. There is a little bit of concerns that 350 is kind of like, um, fatiguing people in terms of participation. So I just wanted to take the pulse in terms of like whether folks think that there's an appetite for a session that's very general followed by some groundwater quality, um, deep dive. And if you say no, my feelings will not be hurt. We want to be practical and we don't want to put a bunch of effort into something that, um, people don't want. So just wanted to ask the question.
So if I could just, um, give my opinion on that. I think it'd be something really good, it's something that's really important for our town. We all have wells and it's of critical importance. We had a seminar on, you know, drought resistant plantings and how to have, make gardens so that, uh, you know, we don't have to throw down as many chemicals and pesticides and, and those types of things to kind of keep our, um, storm waters and well waters and, uh, everything, you know, clean and, um, or cleaner anyway. And I, I think the, the, whether it's with or under the umbrella of the 350 or if it's a separate, um, session, seminar, workshop, Zoom or in person at the library or the community center, I think it's, uh, it's a good thing to have and I think there'd be a lot of interest in.
Yeah, I think it's definitely the environment side. I, I haven't really kept track of how many different events are happening or if we're going to hit a lull. You know, it's like as far as, yeah, timing of when to, to do something, I think there's always value. I don't know if the, kind of, in the fall when everybody's coming back or, I like the idea of having, you know, different, I guess, for me as a homeowner, what would be useful is learning about the different contaminants, understand, I mean, radon, the first time when we bought our house, radon, that was the first time I'd ever heard of radon and we had to do radon mitigation. I guess maybe learning a little bit, um, if you are bringing people in, uh, useful of what are the mitigation techniques? What maybe, I, I don't know if it gets too, um, kind of dry for people to, if it's helpful or not helpful to have some scope of cost to expect to do the mitigation work for radon or manganese or PFAS. I mean, the PFAS one is still seems like it's, um, not, uh, that's a hard one, harder one to come up with a dollar amount to, for, um, management, but.
Yeah, thanks. I mean, the, the speakers we were thinking about are USGS, um, groundwater scientists who could speak to long-term trends and less on the, on the practical treatment side that you're talking about. So that's an interesting angle to think about. Looking at behaviors in New England and climate trends and things like that, but go ahead, Heidi.
Yeah, I think this is a practical thing as a homeowner. I would love to know more about what are these different, I'm so confused with what the different systems are. Like someone says, oh, you use this versus osmosis, you use this for that. We know we have stuff in our water, but I would love, rather than have a salesperson tell you this is what you have to do, it'd be kind of nice just to get a more general overview of the different types of things that can happen and, um, you know, what, what it can remove.
This is really helpful feedback, thank you.
Just, just one, one comment, I, I'm curious whether there are other, I mean, it, the groundwater is a shared resource and I'm just wondering if there's anything on the theme of shared things that could be done, you know, in connection with other groups within Sherburne. You know, I, I don't know, sustainability is another one or, um, but, you know, I'm not, I'm not thinking about a big event necessarily, but I'm just trying to think of something, you know, it, it's, it's kind of sharing Sherburne and it's an inherent part of the community and the connectedness. And I'm just wondering if that theme, if there are other elements that would, that would make sense to maybe combine or synergize with this.
Interesting, yeah, the, the shared resource piece that we had talked about was looking at specific actions that have positive and negative impacts on groundwater quantity and groundwater quality. So for example, the way DPW manages salt application is actually a positive, even though people complain about the roads, right? Like explaining why that's positive or, you know, stormwater management through permeable surfaces is a positive replenishment tactic, right? But, um, so we were trying to like hit on some of the town's decisions as part of that shared resource. And then also hit on like what you're doing on your property and what your neighbors are doing and even what people across town are doing or where there are landfills or point sources for contamination. It just, it feels like a lot of work. I know there's a lot of existing resources out there, but, um, I, it's interesting. This is a good feedback to sort of hear that people are more interested in the practical, how does this apply to my house and where does this, rather than the science side of it, which is what all the groundwater committee wants to hear about. So that's good feedback, thank you. Okay, thanks.
Heidi, you want to give us your town planner report?
Certainly. So last week I attended a meeting with the EO HLC and the AGO on 3A. And it was one of the best talks I've heard on 3A. Um, I did send out a little note that they're going to be doing it again. I did forward that to you guys. If you get a chance, it'll be worthwhile to do it. Frank did find out that they are going to post, record and post it if you can't make the meeting. But it was really nice to have the two different groups because they have two very different views on how they're looking at our 3A proposal. We have to submit a pre-application, an application into the EO HLC group, which is looking at creating housing. Their goal is they want to get as much housing out there as quick as possible, even though this doesn't require us to create any housing. They feel getting it zoned and having capability was the first step. So they're focused on our application on, do we have a spot where we could build? And then the AG's role is looking at our bylaw to say, are you in compliance? Do your, do, would this conflict with any other things in your general bylaws, your other affordable housing, inclusionary zonings, um, to make sure that one doesn't restrict it? So they're trying to kind of work in tandem with the EO HLC, but, um, it was fascinating hearing how they both are having two different viewpoints. That's why we kind of had two different places. We sent our bylaw to one, we sent the application to the other. Um, and I, I thought that was worthwhile to kind of hear what they're looking for. They have learned a lot with some of the initial communities. This is going to be a very telling year with the next, this spring with a whole bunch of town meeting votes coming up. They said they felt there was a bunch of misconception, misinformation about Milton that it wasn't necessarily a vote that, no, they didn't want 3A, they just didn't want it where it was chosen to go. And that was one, there is a factor now after that also doesn't want it, but the initial reason for voting it down was they didn't want that particular area for zoning. So they really, what's a takeaway I had was working with the neighbors, getting them involved in trying to look at your town and trying to get feedback of people of where they think something like this could be zoned. They seemed to have the most success in, in, um, getting this to pass. And many of the other towns have had sessions where they come in and they have a map and they have people play with it and someone leads the discussions on what would it be if we put it in this area? What would it look like if we put over in this area? And it was, they said it was very good, you get a buy-in from the residents, you know, with the decision. And, um, that's something that wasn't done here. So while we have more time and we're kind of stepping back a little bit, slowing down, one of the things I would love to do in May or June is to start having a session one time with the residents to say, come in and take a look and see where you think you could put it. If you don't want it in your neighborhood, you don't want it in Kendall or you don't want it downtown, where would you put it? We have to do something and have them start playing around and seeing what things could work or don't work. And we can bring in, um, someone to facilitate this. We still have money left on our outreach that we could have someone guide. that we could have someone guide and work with that with some of the mapping programs that we could probably put up on the screen. But I I think that would be very good to to get some more resident involvement um, on that. So I was going to see what the thoughts were for the committee. Um, on our bylaw, the attorney general had said that we had a cap that they would turn our bylaw down as as it's prepared right now because we had a cap limiting it and they would never allow that to happen. And that we also have to watch some of our other, we had to make sure that you change your zoning maps in your general bylaws as well, which um, we didn't have that initially is that we're looking to change some of those. Uh, or any other tables need to mention some of those dimension changes as well. So we do have a little bit of work to align those.
I'm sorry, Heidi, what was the first part you were talking about? A cap?
There's a cap, yes. And I couldn't understand where where the cap was. I kept it. So I've actually on Saturday I attended another meeting and Margaret Hurley, who is the um head of our, the municipal law unit for the AGO was the one giving the talk. So I went up and said, you know, she she made the comment in an email that we had this cap and I said, you know, I couldn't see where the cap was. I said, we're not saying we only will do 78 units and, you know, we were talking about 10%, you know, I thought we were pretty in line. But it turns out, so today she sent back, she went back and looked at where it was and there is a section in our bylaw, we where we actually said at least 15 units per, it was a density cap that we put in and we said no more than 20 units per acre. And she said they're considering that a cap and that's where they would not approve our bylaw. So we cannot put in a cap on the density requirement either.
Even though we have um uh, well and septic.
It it doesn't matter what we have for infrastructure. They're not looking at if the lot has well or septic, they're just looking at could it potentially, what if we ever got infrastructure in? You know, say 10 years from now, all of a sudden we have the water sewer area. You know, you're, you know, in downtown, then you could get up to that. So they don't want any cap in the zoning.
So the building height, the building height restrictions still um valid?
She didn't, she didn't say anything about our building height restrictions. And I think that's because if we're putting in in line with, that's what our zoning has been. And that's what our character of the town is. But the density one has nothing to do with height or character or any other reason for having it.
Well, okay, I I guess I still don't understand this cap thing because my I believe it was presented to us as zoning has to allow multifamily at a density of like at least or up to or something. I forget the exact wording, 15 units per acre, which seemed to me to imply that you could cap it at 15 or any number greater than 15 if you wanted to.
Right, but I think we ended up changing ours to be, um, well, we changed our affordable housing thing. And I thought where they were saying at least 15 per acre, but they weren't putting a cap on it. And that's why I'm going to have to go and I'm asking her for, I want to see a bylaw that they like that was written well, like I want to see an example of what they are proving. So we can see what what did that contain and how did that, how's that different from what we had? Because it's 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 clear that what we've got right now is not going to pass. So we've got to go back and look at that and and bring this back to this group and have have us do a working session to figure out what will pass.
Just to clarify the 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 way the overlay works, it would have to be compliant with the the current water requirements. Which would effectively be a cap. It's just that they don't want it to be um, written into the bylaw if the conditions of water supply and sewage were to change.
Right, right. So, you know, things can be built based on, it's up to the developer to figure out how to meet our bylaws with septic and well. But we have to zone to allow for multifamily. Um, you know, and then I've tried to play and look at what other areas that we might consider. I said, you know, where we had five people that wanted to have their properties added to the downtown area. And I counted up the acreage of their lots and it's about six acres of those five lots. To do 15 units per acre, we need just about 5.2 acres to meet that density. So if we just had those five people and if I'd have to look and make sure they wouldn't be excluded lots or whatever, but they're not on the um historic commission's list, the historic district commission had given us a letter. They did not want us to include 41 North Main and they had two other properties they did not want included. These properties aren't on that list. So it's another option that maybe we look more to shifting the area into that, those lots that are willing to be 3A. I also reached out to George Fisk to talk to him about his property. You know, he has a huge 70 acres, maybe, you know, a huge parcel there behind Town Hall. We only have a part of his parcel right now in this proposal. Um, I asked if anyone ever talked to him about, you know, including it and he said, no, he said initially he was, had someone mentioned putting his professional building in, but then he was surprised when he saw his barn and part of his property was in the list too. So I think we have to do better about reaching out to people when we're going to be putting their properties into something that's going to be presented to Town Hall. You know, to get their feelings. So he wants, he's interested in coming and talking about it. Um, and then I also have uh, had someone from the Kendall property reach out to me and they're going to come in next week. They want to start some discussions as well. So we're getting interest positive and negative. Um, but I think it would really be good to start doing a little more outreach and my thought was was hold a session for the residents to to try and do some mapping exercises. And I'm open to hear what the rest of the board thinks. Yes, no?
I mean, I'll just say that it do we have precedence for this when we did the housing production plan and we did have a workshop in it? I think it was some of the reason why people felt um, ownership of the end product because they had been part of the discussion. So I do think it would be good to have some kind of workshop forum to include people in looking at the maps and parcels. But anyone else have thoughts? I'm curious.
Marian, did you want to say something?
Uh, yeah, I just have a a quick comment about those properties in Town Center that expressed interest in being part of the, uh, did I I seem to remember at least one of them talked about uh, liking the idea of mixed use on their land. And that would kind of eliminate them from the district, right?
Yes, right. But they also had said they were flexible that, you know, if they had a preference, they would choose mixed use, but they would would accept multifamily. That was initially what they said. That's why I kind of feel we need to talk more about it and say, you know, mixed use is not going to work for us. We would need a multifamily designation. Steph?
Yeah, I was just curious if um, if we do an overhaul on the districting, whether that be make it smaller or do a workshop and identify alternative locations that haven't been considered in the past. And then we're shooting for maybe like a fall or spring town meeting for a vote. Are there resources available to redo the bylaw and re-pass it through the attorney generals, through the, you know, state's first screening check and like, how does that all look? And was that is that being considered as part of the consultant budget for the town meeting and just sort of general questions about process?
Yes, so um, I am looking into all of that, actually. I I have asked for another grant because initially we had 20,000 to do the mapping and to work on the bylaw and to submit. Well, we now have a bylaw that hasn't quite passed and we have, our our submission didn't pass either. And so those things need to be reworked. Part of it was, and I talked to the state, they changed, we did all this in June and July, trying to be very early. They made some changes in August on their criteria. Which also then hurt us because all our maps and planning were done on the first version. So I'm trying to put a little pressure back with Mass Housing Production and say, you know, you changed some of our rules, can you give us some more money? Because now we have to redo this to fit with what's going to work with you. And they are looking into it. Um, they said right now the priority are the towns that are, have to get passed by this December. You know, we're not until next December. We're in the small adjacent town. But um, she did say she is, she does understand this and she is trying to work to get us some funding. They did put me in contact with another consultant that would do this. It's actually a different consultant they suggested. Um, so that is being worked at because we would need money to, we, but we have to redo our maps. Um, by law, we could probably work with town council if we had to and work on that. They, you know, they are willing to help on that. Um, timing was sorry. I'm looking at trying to get something done that we identify parcels by the fall. I'm looking at a spring town meeting probably. I don't think we'd be ready in the fall.
Is there even going to be a fall meeting, town meeting? That would be a special town meeting if there were.
It'd be a special town meeting. I know Jackie would like not to have one. And I haven't heard yet if there's any reason to have a special town meeting. Neither. Okay. Yeah, so I, so I'm operating on that. We're looking at this for spring. If we get a consultant on, I'd want to try and get a consult, if we get money and get a consultant on, I'd look at August, September, October. I did ask the EO HLC if, you know, about the resubmission. They will not have people resubmit what they did. They said they have too many applications. They cannot go through that and they will not go through looking to see if you made changes if if they'll now accept it. However, they told me they will look at a new proposal. So if we do come up with some new mapping areas, they're willing to let us submit a new application and give us another 90 day, it would take 90 days for them to give us their feedback. So, which is odd, but you know, that that is something that's available. So the goal for me was I was trying to back this into timings to try and get parcels identified for, and the consultant on board that we have, so everything kind of crafted moving to September, October, so that by November, we we pretty much have our plans set. If we can get it submitted, great, but we're trying to get this so we have our warrant language ready for the beginning of February this time for spring town meeting. And please jump in, correct me because I'm new at doing this. So I'm just trying to go and work with what the timeline looks to be.
I think August is probably maybe a little tough for vacation times, but certainly um if you get things lined up so that we're ready to go for, you know, September to get things done and, you know, moving it pretty fast and that would probably be the the goal, the ideal.
Yeah, but I can't lose the time this summer. I said, we're going to still have to do some work and you know, I'm hoping that after we can get through town meeting is then some of our planning board meetings will be spent looking at the bylaws and looking at the mapping and the situations to have the group get on board.
Start writing those agendas.
Is there a slow time here? Someone going to let me know if that happens? Yeah, and then if if there, the other project we have to do is is looking at the zoning bylaws. And um, I had talked with Chris, our now former town building inspector. He had some things he had wanted to be changed and he and I, he had identified some inconsistencies. I also had looked at some things that I felt we really needed to look at. Um, different things when you, if you look at the outdoor entertainment, it's prohibited in all districts except for business, yet our farmer events has outdoor entertainment and that is, this one is in a residential area. So we need to amend some of these things to line up to say, you know, outdoor entertainment might be by special permit as well. There's a bunch of little small things like that, I think, that have come up.
So you said, Chris, is our former building, he's no longer?
Yes, yes, no, he's as of yesterday, he's um resigned. He's going going to work for Metapoyse full-time. Which is right by where he lives.
Yeah, it's a quality of life movement. He was happy working in Sherborne and he's going to be sad to leave, but um, and he's been very good for Sherborne, but for the commute's been brutal and for his family, this opportunity came up. So it's a, it's a good situation for him. We'll, and he's happy to continue to, you know, be a resource for any questions and as things come up since he does know our bylaws and zoning. So I'm sure we will, as we try to figure out the kind of what would the improvement be, we'll get out to him.
Yeah. And I was very sad to hear that because we, he and I had a plan initially that we were going to sit down this summer when we thought it was going to be a quiet time to go through some of this. And other than that with town planner, I'm, if anyone is knows anything about 81 Prospect Street, I have been getting several inquiries on that property and what can be done on that property. I don't know if that's something that's been before the planning board before. No?
What, is that the 40B property?
No, 81 Prospect Street is for sale right now. And it involves a parcel next to it that has 100 feet frontage. The parcel that's for sale has 200 feet frontage and then there's 36 acres behind it. That is, so these three parcels are kind of all um, I guess interconnected.
It's on Zillow, it's 40 acres on Zillow. Someone brought it up at the Ozzy VA hearing for um Greenwood Homes last week, so I think.
Oh, they did. Is that, is that why I'm getting all these calls? I don't know, but it's like I've gotten several of, you know, what can you, so there's one home on it right now.
Yes.
And then I'm getting calls like, you know, what can we do? How much street frontage? Can we add more homes in here? Can we do that? So just a heads up, that might be some projects that that um come our way. And that's it for the town planner report.
All right, so um, I think we addressed everything on the agenda. The time is 7:50 PM. There's no other issues to discuss. They have a motion to adjourn. Second. Second. Okay, moved in secondary. Any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, we'll call those to adjourn our planning board meeting. Addie Mae Weiss is aye, Frank Coke.
Aye.
Uh, Bob Wolf.
Aye.
And Will Denham.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for your time tonight and we'll see you in two weeks or are we meeting next week?
I don't have next week, week down.
April 2nd, I believe, isn't it?
April 2nd, so two weeks. Okay, yeah, the first and third are regularly planning board is the first and third Tuesdays of the month, so.
Will they still be zoomed? Will they still be zoomed?
Uh, yes, I, we, we will still be, we will be zoomed for April 2nd unless um, I find out that we've got a different technology, but at the moment we're still in the same technology situation. So, but I will reach out or if anyone has any strong feelings. But um we are technically adjourned.
If we had a night.
Was that?
I was just gonna say if we had an A and R on the agenda, a lot of times we, that's something that we need to sign and that's, that's one of the reasons why we were meeting in person as well as it gives us an opportunity to have a working assessment.
So we'll, we'll let it be to be determined and in the next couple of days we'll make a judgment call on that depending on what's on the agenda. And we'll inform everyone.
Sherwell wants as many in-person meetings as possible before it's off.
At least one.
At least one, okay.
All right. All right, everyone. Have a good night. Thank you.
Good night.
Night.